Yes, we will call the meeting to order. The first order of business is the oath of office for the superintendent of schools.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge duties of the superintendent of schools of the White Plains City School District, White Plains, New York, according to the very best of my ability.
Next, we will elect a temporary chairperson.
I move that Michelle Schoenfeld be elected as temporary chairperson.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we will have the oath of office to the two board members elected today, and that is Cheryl Brady and Charlie Norris.
You should have them memorized.
Have we worked on a harmony?
I think we did a pretty good job a few years ago.
You did. Here we go.
You want to go first?
Who's going high, who's going low?
Can we do it?
Sure.
Three, two, one.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
That was very good.
Unrehearsed.
Next, we have the election of the president of the board. Is there a nomination?
I would like to nominate Rosemary Eller to be president of the Board of Education for the coming school year.
Second.
May I be all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Eller, would you take the oath of office, please?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
I know the meeting is all yours.
Thank you.
Well.
Did she sign it?
She hasn't signed yet. Until you sign it.
Next, we're going to elect the vice president of the board. I would like to nominate Charlie Norris as vice president of the board. May I have a motion?
Second.
So?
So moved.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As you go.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president of the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability. You got it.
Next, we're going to take items three through 10 in one summary action. So may I have a motion for items three through 10?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we will have Mrs. Schoenfeld take her oath of office.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school district clerk of the city school district of the City of White Plains, New York, according to the best of my ability.
And with that, I'd like to adjourn the reorganization meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So next, we get to go into our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is July 8th. Please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Davonia Jones, Sandy Cangliosi Marino, Jody Nestle, and Phyllis Suver. Davonia Jones was a teaching assistant at Post-Road School from 2004 to 2018. Sandy Cangliosi Marino was principal of Ridgeway School from 1999 to 2004. Jody Nestle was assistant principal at Post-Road School from 2005 to 2009. And Phyllis Suver taught home economics at Eastview Middle School from 1962 to 1992.
Wow.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into our public hearing on the code of conduct. Do we have any questions?
So I just have the very few highlighted changes. Were those actual changes or were they additions or?
There was some minor changes with regard to language.
Okay, it was just the language.
The substance of the code, but they added some additional definitions and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I don't have any. Okay, so this will, this is our public hearing, and I guess we'll adopt at the next meeting. Okay. Thank you, guys. Next, we'll have announcements from board members. I think, you know, the most pressing announcement is that we had a wonderful graduation.
Yeah.
It's the culmination of all the work of every single colleague in this district, no matter where they sit, no matter where they execute their duties from. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that is the best day of the entire school year for us to see, you know, our kids graduate. It's a little, you know, I've become a little ambivalent because if you think of it, we've all guided those kids through, like, we've all gone to a elementary school's graduation for the kids to graduate and the middle school. So I certainly think it's, it was a wonderful day, and I'm just proud of all of them, as well as all the work that every single person does in every spot in this district. So, you know, if anyone else wants to add anything to that?
The valedictory address and who gave it was, I thought was very powerful, and it was, said a lot about our schools, about who we are, and, yeah, just like that.
And then later this summer, we also have our summer school graduation.
Right, in August.
That's right. Let's not forget that. I think that's a great event that certainly we look forward to every year as well for folks who didn't have the opportunity to do it last week or two weeks ago, but are persevering and pushing through. And I look forward to being there. I know, I know as a group, we all work very hard to make sure we're at that event every year, so we did it twice last year.
Yeah, good, good point. And your point that we all make it, and does it matter if it's five students or one student? We all show up so that we underscore the importance of the achievement. So thank you, Jim, Chris, for saying that. Anything else? Cool, look at us, happy and grinning. Next, next we'll have public participation. Do we have any public participation tonight? It's so crowded in here. I don't want you guys to be pushing too much. Okay, next we'll move right to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Eller. Welcome to the new school year.
Oh, my gosh.
You said that.
Hey, they're advertising school supplies already.
Already, right?
It's amazing.
I know, I was talking to Ms. Allgarten this morning, and I said, "It's July, right?" It is July.
Just barely.
Just barely. But we are, and we're thinking about the new school year already. But I think it does make a lot of sense to pause for a moment and really celebrate our students and graduation. And just, in very estimated numbers right now, because we haven't gotten all of our numbers, certainly we have students who are going to be graduating in the summer, but right now, 64% of our graduating class is reporting that they're going to be attending a four-year college, and 31% of the graduating class is reporting that they're going to be attending a two-year college. So over, right, right, over 90%, 95% of our students are attending either a four- or two-year college. At this time, we have 2% of our graduating class attending technical or trade schools, and 3% is going into the military. So, and two of those students, who off the top of my head right now, I can tell you, are going to be serving at our academies. So, yeah, it's really, it's really something to be very proud of. Right now, estimated numbers, our graduation rate within White Plains High School is 95%. With White Plains High School and Rochambeau combined, we're at 92%. So again, you know, a lot to be proud of for our young people. And, you know, I just actually interviewed three students who just wrapped up their freshman year in college that were going to be playing on the community channel in a few weeks right before this meeting. And it is so impressive to hear our students talk about the experiences that they had at White Plains High School and how that transcends into college and continues to support them and do good for them as they move into the world. So a lot to be proud of, and congratulations to the class of 2019. You also have some information in front of you related to accelerated earth science at Highlands. This is very basic information, but I think provides some good feedback related to the first year of implementation. The good news is, I think, that we have a number of students who were exposed to a course this year who wouldn't have been exposed to that course and are now moving into the high school with high school credit.
That's great.
We also know that there are students who will need additional support moving forward, and that's okay, too. 72%, well, it's right in front of me, I can just tell you, 72.6% of our students earned a 65 or higher, so past the regions of the 320, or rather, 320 of the 441 who took it, 131 students earned an 85 or higher, 30.8%. And looking at the numbers from the students who would have taken it this year, who would have taken it last year, apples to apples, if you will, all of those students passed, or rather, demonstrated mastery again in taking that test. So the last slide, which I thought was interesting, it really, thoughts and comments, 10 students earned mastery who would not have been selected to take the program. So right out of the gate, those 10 children would not have been, would not have had access to the program in the past, and that's something really to be proud of. 102 students earned high school credit who would not have been selected. And eight students with special needs earned local diploma credit who would not have been selected. So again, preliminary results, first year of implementation. The board, you know, really was very supportive of our faculty and staff members and administration trying something new. There is always room for improvement, but you are living the mission that you put on the wall. You are giving more access to more kids, and that's something that we've always been proud of in White Plains. And, you know, looking at these numbers, I think that's something to be proud of. So moving forward, we'll continue to keep you updated, but in terms of the first year of implementation, I think a great deal of credit needs to go to Mr. Spatafor, so, well, let me say this, Dr. Hand, Dr. Doty, Mr. Spatafor, his team, and without a doubt our faculty and staff members, but also our kids. Because one of the things that really resonates with me is anecdotal information coming from the classroom teachers was that with the higher level of engagement, more kids were more engaged in the work. And, you know, issues related to classroom management were reduced in those sections, again, anecdotally, according to those teachers, with that higher level of engagement. So, yeah, it's good, it's really good stuff. So congratulations on that. And, you know, we have more work to do, but good for our kids. Yep. Questions on that at all? We can always talk, we can, we can come back to it, too, if you like. Summer school opened smoothly, little bumpy right around the holiday. We had a few students who were absent on Friday, as you can imagine, leading into the holiday weekend. But I spoke to Mr. West this morning, and everything is going well, and we almost had a full complement this morning, so all good there. We're looking forward to welcoming our student representatives, Esteban and Lauren. We have the Board of Education retreat, which President Eller and Mrs. Schoenfeld and I will reach out to you guys to solidify that date, which will be exciting, and then strategic planning taking place in August as well. And then just in terms of an update on the Ridgway principal search, we are working right now presently with finalists, and will be moving forward in the coming days, and a recommendation will be forthcoming there. I have an award that I'm very happy to present this evening, and it's a Board of Education Excellence Award Level Two to Dr. Cheryl Brady, who is being certified. Congratulations. Fantastic. And I also want to congratulate again Ridgway Elementary School, who has been identified by the State Education Department as a recognition school, not just for their hard work related to student achievement, but also student growth and access. So this is, you know, a nice recognition for them, one of which they should be very proud, and we're looking forward to great things. Can you continue and come from all of our schools?
Congratulations, Cheryl.
Congratulations, Cheryl, and Ridgway.
Cheryl and Ridgway. Awesome.
And the last thing, the winners of the hospital's exceptional challenge were once again, I believe, Mrs. Schoenfeld, the George Washington Stompers? I forget the, I forget the, I forget the name.
Wait, wait, wait. George GW Wacky Walkers.
Wacky Walkers, right. Congratulations to the Wacky Walkers, who did a tremendous job this year, first place again. And what can I say, those folks really, they take their steps very seriously.
So do we.
Our schools took the top three awards.
Yeah.
Second place to the Church Street Foxy Trotters, and third place were Rochambeau Real Rebels.
Real Rebels.
Wow.
Congratulations to all.
Awesome.
Yes.
Oops, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Rick. So next we'll move to our summary action items. We have, I'm sorry, items four through, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Lot of them.
Wait, 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 wait.
Twenty pages.
I know, I know, but I had it, I had it written.
Four through eight, maybe?
No, no, no.
No?
I think there's more than that, I'm sorry.
Maybe we'll do it separately.
Yeah, so we have items four through eights. Yeah, actually, yes, correct. We have items four through eight. So for items four through eight, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Sorry. Second. Ty goes to the right.
Mr. Vice President. Rick has his spiritual.
Yes, ma'am. We would like to acknowledge, oh, do we have, do you want me to do it now, or you want me to wait until you have a second and all?
You do.
Oh, you have it all?
Yeah.
Just like to, once again, as we do each month, thank our generous donors for just really selfless gifts that they provide for our students here in White Plains City School District. $300 from the Missouri for English, that's a new language program, a half-size violin from Charles Svinchi, I think Svinchi, yes, for the music department, $500 to the Seed Club, and $500 to the Songwriters Club at White Plains High School from Anna Españo, $1,000 from Mary K. Anderson for the Margaret L. Kurtz Memorial Scholarship, $950 from various donors for the Pasquale Evangelista Scholarship, $150 from various donors for the Liz Fink Hildago Scholarship Fund, and $10,000 from the Massinter Family Foundation for the Massinter College Incentive and Scholarship Program. Thank you all for your generous donations.
All in favor?
Wait, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we did say that, I just want clarification, because here it does say recommended approval of the code of conduct, so it's not like we're doing a first reading of a policy, we're actually approving.
We hope we had the hearing.
Yeah, so we're not waiting until the next meeting.
Nope.
Would you add a couple of things here, too, if it'd be all right?
If I just, this donation is really exceptional, and it'd be great to hear another time kind of how it's going to be implemented and used district-wide for things like this. We don't, we don't see these every, every month.
Nope.
And it's certainly a great incentive. And looking through this agenda, there's a lot of great things on it here, especially with Albany, University of Albany.
Yes.
We have, and this is a wonderful, as a tuition-paying parent, it's become more obvious to me as we go forward to this, but we really have an opportunity for our students to take online courses at no cost, right?
Well, is that the science research program? It's really the science research program.
It's there, and the credits are there.
We still have.
Another credit opportunity for our students. Business office going after, again, other revenues, other than tax revenues.
Parking at Rochambeau.
For parking, low impact to our students, which I think is a wonderful opportunity. I see we're doing piggybacking on bids, again, this is business, but it helps lower the cost and helps us do our business faster. And these are, these are things that Governor Cuomo signed as part of creating some efficiencies in government, and I think they're very effective, and it's about shared services, and these are good things that are going to allow us to dedicate more resources to the classroom, and really, that's what, that's what we want to do. I see we're renewing our school resource officer program, and I think that's a wonderful program for the city. I've shared this with Dr. Rick as well. I think as a parent, it's certainly reassuring to know that we have that partnership with our city. I guess my, as a board member, I'd love to see more of it, see kind of what we've, what we've been able to do, and that visibility really means a lot. And I'm at the high school every morning until my daughter gets her driver's license or learns how to take the bus, and it'd be great to see them at different times and in different places, because I know that's a large part of the SRO, SRO process. And again, it's a lot of money that we have to dedicate to this program, and again, I think we deserve the best for our students, and I think there's places for it to grow, and I think we've got really good folks doing there, and people are all pointed in the right direction. I'm sorry, just one other thing. No, that was it. But there's a lot going on here.
Just to your, related to the Massinter Family Foundation, this scholarship is going to be dedicated to providing college experiences for students to, who are exploring highly selective colleges. So to be able to visit and obtain more information. Terrific. It's a really unique.
No, very generous, very generous gift, great opportunity, create exposure, and all donations are terrific, that people are thinking of our district. Just ones like this are significant, and we don't see these every month, so I think it's.
An opening up opportunities for students who wouldn't necessarily have them otherwise.
That's right.
It's very generous. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we, before I go into the individual items, just wanted to say, Dr. Stein and Dr. Latizia are on here tonight. Dr. Latizia is out of the country, as well as Dr. Stein, and they will be back for our next regular meeting. So let's move into individual action items. Next, we have the recommended approval of the appointment of dignity for all students coordinators for the 2019-2020 school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the, okay, next we have the recommended authorization of the board president to execute amendments for the following employee agreements. I can just read it once and just mention all.
Just mention their names.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, to resolve, the Board of Education hereby approves and authorize the board president to execute a certain Second Amendment of employment agreement with Deb Allgarten, I'm sorry, Deborah Allgarten, Debbie DeHain, Scott Pepper, and Bicaro Teich, sorry for not saying doctors, we are applicable. We have all that content, so may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So I think this is a nice time to really just publicly say thank you. Yeah, I always think that thank you, you know, thank you is a powerful word, and I don't think we, you know, use that very lightly, but just to say thank you for what you've done. We've said that everyone in the district, no matter where they sit, does a great job, but we know, you know, the long hours, we're aware of the long hours you put in, and it is appreciative, because it all contributes to that favorite day of ours, and thank you.
Thank you.
I sleep better knowing that you particular four people are here.
Me, too.
That's very nice. It's very nice. Yeah, so, so thank you. It just doesn't seem like enough, you almost, you know, wish there was another word beyond that, squared, cubed, I don't know. Yes, yes, yes.
But we appreciate all the work.
Yeah, and the hours, because many times when we're scuffling around here, whatever hour after whatever meeting.
You're still here.
You're still here. Yeah, don't be offended if we tell you to come home, it's just we want you to come back rested to do the same thing the next day. So thank you, thank you, and thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we are going to have the recommended approval of the superintendent of schools contract for July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2024. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So, I think I, you know, Joe, Dr. Rick and I touched earlier today, and, you know, when we met and really talked, you know, about everything, we also wanted to say again, thank you, and we hope that this contract speaks to, you know, how we want you here to have that stability that we've been craving and needing for so long. It hope, I hope it speaks to our confidence and the hope that there's so much more good to come in our partnership.
Can I say something?
You can say whatever.
First thing I want to say is, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much to my team as well for all of your hard work, and to the Board of Education, I am extremely grateful for the opportunity to serve this community. I love our kids, I love our schools, and I love that I know that I have a long and challenging future here. You know, one of the great things about White Plains is that we've never settled, and even when we, you know, sort of hit the mark, we raise the bar and want to continue to do more for kids. So I'm really grateful for you to allow me to continue to work in this wonderful community, and I will continue, I took the oath.
And signed it.
I signed it, and I will, and I'll give everything I have for our kids. So thanks for, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, and I can't underscore, yeah, I can't underscore enough.
We didn't vote yet.
I know, wait, wait, wait. So I just wanted, you know, so that Joe is aware that I think we were kind of very happy to have really squared everything away and really quickly and be on one accord. And as I said to him, I skipped off, thinking, hey, all is said and done, just a few things needed to be done. But thank you on, you know, thank you from all of us. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, do we have any board committee reports?
I don't think so.
No.
Last week.
Right, right. So I want to just, before I adjourn, is to thank John and John.
Executant.
Yes, yes. I just want to thank John and John for all you do and continue to do, even though John Savage is hiding behind the screen.
There he is.
Yes, the man behind the screen. Just want to say thank you again. As I had said, everyone somehow contributes to the success of our students, no matter where they are. success of our students, no matter where they sit and no matter what we do or what they do, so thank you. May I have a motion to go into exec session to discuss personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a great summer.[1776.87]